Has anybody heard from him?
I never hear. Do we need to text him?
There is a call this afternoon. Didn't talk to Trudy.
He was going to check on us. Which probably Candy's covering because gym player and surgeons. Yes, that's right.
How are you? Slow and easy. All right, you ready to get started? All right, we got, we got everybody. Let's go ahead and get started. Stand up so you can play. Thank you.
Can you give me just a minute?
Absolutely.
So. Having said, in the big chair up here. For twenty plus years. It was time for me to go. Is that I've enjoyed. The time with the town. I appreciate. The other council members. Passed. And. I'm hereby retiring. From the town council. So. With love to the council members. And to the audience. Have a good evening.
Okay, I don't really know how to handle this situation.
You have to accept it. By motion.
Okay.
If that's your choice.
So when somebody else make a motion, I didn't foresee this coming by no means.
I'll make a motion.
In a second. I'll second it. All right. No choice, okay? All, all unanimous.
And now it would be, you can sit on this for a while, or you can direct staff to. Put out a notice looking for applications. It's up to you. If you want to sit on it for a meeting, or however you want to proceed.
I mean, I'd be elected at least until the end of the meeting, man.
Excellent.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I told them about surprise. All right. Let's, let's go ahead and get an approval of the agenda we got. Somebody make this motion on that? I made a motion. Second. Any announcements?
I'm from a sir.
Okay, anybody else, okay?
I'll remind you, there's a blood drive in this room tomorrow.
In this room tomorrow.
In this room tomorrow. I don't know the time.
But it's posted somewhere probably on the website.
I know it's on the website, and I'm sure it wouldn't start much before nine.
Okay, that's what I don't know. Ms. Parland, has anybody signed up for public comments? Thank you. So having no public comment, how about an approval on the consent agenda? Get a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, second, second. Okay, thank you. Okay, let's move on to the regular agenda. Major special use permit.
Mr. Mayor, this is an item before you this evening as part of the standard procedure for reviewing of special use permits. And for more information and details, I'm going to hand it over to Mike Malichek, who's on the administrative.
Good evening, council. So just for a quick summary, we received the major special use permanent application on January fourteenth from Long Branch Development. The request is for enough, they want one hundred and forty-eight unit multifamily town home development approximately thirty-seven acres. And twenty-two eleven and twenty-two fifty-three Douglas Road. The property is his own mixed use and their commercial which allow for the cycle of development. Major special use permits require the approval of town council only after receiving a recommendation from the planning board. So basically, we're coming before you tonight as a formality to present the application. And ask for both to send this to the planning board if you choose to do so. It will be at their February first meeting next Tuesday, which we're preparing for. And then because we have a few new council members, I just wanted to highlight a few things about special use permits and quasi judicial procedure. So special use permits are decided in an evidentiary hearing, which means town council's decision has to be based solely on the evidence presented during that hearing, which would come after the planning board recommendation. Normally in North Carolina, the practice of asking an advisory board like the planning board for a recommendation. Is somewhat common, but it has some legal pickups. Basically, the council. Can take into consideration some of the comments, topics the planning board may raise. You're welcome to attend, you know, listen to the meeting. But really, the final decision should be based on evidence in the record during the hearing, which will come at a later date. But all we're asking for tonight is to forward this to the planning board for the next step.
Can you make any more questions? Typically, on something like this, it was good to plan board, they'll review it real good, they'll come back with their recommendation. That's usually a good time to come up with any questions, because they usually look it all over and beat any of the bad stuff up. Everybody give the Senate to the plan board? If so, we'll need motion. I'll make a motion to send everybody the special use permit. In a second. Hey, moving on to the grant project.
The grant project ordinance in front of you this evening. Is to, basically, we take the next step in setting up funding screens to spend American Rescue Plan. Relief funds and just for the benefit of the public and, and I know that some of the council members are aware of this, but. Quickly, in summary, last year, the American Rescue Plan Act was passed. And it allocated. Billions of dollars to, to all of the state, local, and tribal governments across the country. And it was based off of population and Mills Rivers allotment of that, just about two point three million dollars. The money comes in two halves. We got the first half last August. We forget the second half, twelve months after that. We don't know exactly when that will be. In May of this, excuse me, May of last year, they issued what was called an interim final rule, which basically was the rule before the final rule. That outlined what you could do with those funds. It was very vague and difficult to interpret and very restrictive. In January of this year. The US Department of Treasury released the final rule. And that increased eligible expenditures and clarified a lot of the. Ambiguity in, in the interim rule. Most importantly, as far as Mills River is concerned, and many other governments of our size in the state. The treasury has offered. What I'm calling a ten million dollar standard deduction. So as long as your. As long as your receipts from the government are less than ten million dollars. You don't have to prove a loss of revenue. And that's really important because in the interim final rule. You could use your funding for four main categories. And then there was another one. That was, if you had lost revenue, you could use these funds to make up that lost revenue and provide. Government services to the extent you lost that revenue. So for example, had the town lost a hundred thousand dollars in revenue. With these funds under the interim rule, we could have used one hundred thousand dollars for just general government services. However, Mills River was fortunate, like many other communities across the state, we did not lose revenue. People paid their taxes and sales tax way up, so. We came out very strong. However, what this does allow is because of this ten million dollar standard deduction. It opens the field, if you will, as to allowable expenditures and what you can do with the money. So you'll notice in the attached ordinance. That we have taken the two points, it's just for the public's benefits, two million three hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars and twenty-seven cents. We have broken that out equally amongst the allowable expenditures. We have not discussed as a group how this money is to be spent explicitly, other than the fire department and improvements to this room. So we've broken out, we have broken out the funds equally amongst the available categories. With the intention that once final projects are selected, we will modify its ordinance. To account for the specific projects. And so we're doing this as a first step so that we can begin expending this funding as soon as some decisions are made about how the money is to be spent. So this is. Just a little bit more than a clerical effort. Step to take, but it is something that will require to do by law to account for the income and expenditure for funding.
Anybody have any question? Forty-nine, the same as they were before. They decided to give us. The first ten being. The three.
I'm going to defer to Sue Powell Finance Director for that one.
The, the reporting guidelines are very similar. They're, they're not quite as extensive. We don't have to write. A narrative justifying everything you do by bringing, by spending it through our general fund. For general government services. Whereas before, we would have had to write a narrative. Up to five hundred words justifying each expenditure. Yeah, so it's a little bit less complicated. But still, a lot of hoops to jump through.
Would you have to write, would you have had to write that for up to what amount? Like if it was five thousand dollars, you still have to write it?
Every expenditure.
Every expenditure.
Okay. But now it's not.
Now, now we don't have to write the narrative, but. There's, there's still reporting. There are many policies we have to adopt. There's a policy for every type of expenditure just about. Trying to think. For one thing, we have, we have to adopt the federal uniform guideline procurement standards for, for purchasing. Which means you have to adopt uniform guideline conflict of interest for purchasing. There's, there's one that if we give to a nonprofit, we'd have to have a sub recipient policy. Yeah, and then you can comply as well.
So. We have a motion to move forward to this American Rescue Plan. Grant for.
Yes, we need you in the motion and our two ordinances you're adopting. One establishes the fund and the other moves the, the monies into the fund.
Okay, and we'll start with the first one to prove just the ordinance. This on the first page. You get with it? You have a second? Any questions?
Just one, is. As we get through this process, if we see that something's not working particularly for us, the town. Is this, are we able to change the way we go about?
How do you mean exactly, Randy?
Well, I don't know, ten floors, we have talked, you know, some talk that maybe if we funded a nonprofit and the, and the nonprofit. Did not spend the money the way we thought nonprofits and do, that we might be liable for that money. Is this still a bit?
Yes, yes. So even, even with this. Allowance to, this ten million dollars, any funds that are spent by the, by the town, and that includes distribution through a contract with a nonprofit or somewhere else. They then. There are some of the responsibilities for oversight management and their own audit. And we have to also ensure that they're following proper protocols. Because ultimately, the town is the responsible entity. The nonprofit. We would have to work with them to recoup the funds if they spent them in error. But the treasury is not going to go to nonprofit and ask for those funds. They're going to come to the town and say. You guys owe us this money because they didn't do it correctly, or something like that. The only thing that we're locked into is if we take the, the loss revenue calculation. Obviously, we didn't lose ten million dollars, so that's the route we're going to go. But, and once we tell the treasury that, we can't change that, but there will be no reason to do that, no reason to change that.
It's, it's pretty minimal. We're going to have to jump through the hoops again. Spend it.
Second. I'll say. All right. On this. Second part of. This basically just covering the transfer. Is I'll take it to each section.
That's exactly what it is.
And yes, the first, the first section basically shows it coming. It's coming out in your general fund and the second part is it's going into your new fund you've just created. And, and that will keep you, now when you look at reports that we give you. Your, your. Cash position is not overstayed.
Okay. So on that, and on this money, we have, do we know exactly how long we've got to disperse it back out?
The, the money has to be encumbered by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. And it has to be completely spent by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six. So we could, we could sign a contract, for example, in December of twenty-four. For a project, and as long as it's completed and the money's been spent by December of twenty-four, twenty-six.
Okay.
We're all good.
Anybody else have any questions on this part? Good. I'd like to have a motion to approve this stage. Say it. Second. Second, Jack. All right. We're all, soon he's told them to see. We can, okay, good deal. Okay, moving on, we'll kind of talk about the transportation bicycle.
So this project was started earlier, excuse me, last year. For the benefit of the new, new council and the public, the state department of transportation has a pot of funding each year. It offers for grants. For municipalities to apply for either a bike and, or pedestrian or combined bike pedestrian plan. Those are qualified for both, so we applied last year and were awarded that funding. The town's match was five thousand dollars. Twenty-five hundred of that came from the Blue Ridge Bicycle Club. The town made up the twenty-five hundred. So the project was officially green lighted. Green light last spring. We started some of the legwork with transportation planning and design. We're here this evening. Last summer. So I've invited Christie Carter from TPD to come and give you a quick update on that project. Just so you can see where things stand at this point. Christie, the floor is yours. Give me just one second, you have the presentation.
I'll point this way and it'll work, but when you point that this way, it won't work. When I get that up, I'll say, Mayor Johnson, council member, thanks for having me. I'll try to give you a straightforward, not surprising presentation. Okay, great, thank you. Santa said, I'm Christie Carter from traffic planning and design, and we are based out of Asheville. And the way we ended up here is when you apply, when your town applies for the bicycle pedestrian planning grant, D O T decided to consult and they were lucky enough to be assigned here in our backyard. So I'll go through this pretty quickly, so just kind of the overview of what we're doing. And up to this point, we've mostly just worked with the steering committee and we're getting ready to actually go out and do. A public meeting that I'll talk about at the end. So we're just, we're investigating your site. That is very catchy. Oh, do you know what I can do? Um, no, I think that they may have, they use this to do the video that we're going to put on the. I think it's on, it may be on Halloween. So if you can just kind of hit your back arrow if it goes too fast.
Yeah.
Anyhow, we're investigating sidewalks, greenways and bike facilities. And if you know, you don't have a lot of sidewalks, bikes, facilities and greenways, which is what are here in town park. So that has kind of shaped our approach and how we're doing things in Marcel, in Marcel, I am also in Marcel, so apologize, I say that every day. But in Dan Mills River. So the purpose is to identify the connections. What are those key places that people want to go by biking foot? How do we build that network? If there are places that people want to go by bike and foot, and then how do we. Foster bicycle and for that bicycle pedestrian friendly Mills River, so that if you are someone who's out on bike or foot, you feel comfortable. You feel welcome or you're encouraged to get out there and do that. And we worked with the steering committee to do the vision. I won't read this word for word for you, or for to you, but some of the highlights meaning that people, the vision is that when you think twenty years ahead, that people are going to be able to easily walk and bike for transportation and recreation in the town. And making sure that when we're thinking about people being able to do that, that they're reaching the key destinations. One thing, for instance, that the steering committee wanted to make sure is that we included schools as a key destination. And you'll see how that plays out when I get to a mapping piece. This is going to make me go fast. This is great. So, so why this plan is a vision for multi-modal connectivity, a position for the town for future funding partnerships, supports multi-modal goals. And a guide to developer participation. So there's a big policy piece that we do for these plans as well. It's just will be guidelines on the app. One thing I, I have, I have started to call this my wet blanket slide. Because when we come into communities, people get really excited because they're excited about walking and biking and they want to do more, and want trails and want freeways and sidewalks and crossings. And we're really down at the left and my left end of that, that arrow, and this is the guiding plan. And then it, it can take a long time to actually get projects on the ground. And as, as council members, you probably are familiar with that. So we try to be upfront with community members to say, this is your starting point, this is your foundation, this is your vision. Once we leave, it's up to you all to implement. So that ten million dollars that you just got, I can easily spend that on bike and pedestrian projects for you if you want to. All through it all, there's ongoing community engagement as well. So we like to just be really upfront to our steering committee, community members and council about where we are in this. So schedule wise, this is where we are. I did mention kind of that number three, the second dot N. We're kicking off the engagement process. We're kind of in the final reviewing draft. You start, you should start seeing flyers and posts about our community meeting coming up. In February, we'll have the whole window open, community engagement window open throughout February. So folks who can't attend the virtual meeting, can't attend. Come do a guided walkthrough. Community engagement session on. The website that we've created for this project. So our progress to date, Mills River's progress to date, you have not quite a mile outside of that one marked crosswalk. One point two miles of trail and zero on the street bike and zero planned on street bike facilities. So because you don't have a lot on the ground, normally what we do is come in and say, well, let's look at what's on the ground and how do we make better connections with what's currently there. Since you don't have that, we were able to come somewhat speed this process up when we, when we met with steering committee, I think just last week. That we presented, we went ahead and presented some projects and you are going to see those. And one other thing that we have done to help guide our projects is do a good bit of data analysis already to look at where have you had bicycle and pedestrian crashes. Surprisingly, not a ton of bicycle and pedestrian crashes. I expected particularly along two eighty, I expected to see more. But if you do notice those. Crashes with the green circles around them, which some are out in Mills River, those are the more severe crashes. So kind of in this area in general, and this is kind of prominent in rural areas. Because you have high-speed roads, people, the crashes tend to be more severe. This is traffic counts, and this is the other thing that we look at. Where you have a lot of volume in terms of cars and we are thinking about facilities, we want to separate bicycles and pedestrians from larger volume roads carrying lots of cars at high speeds. So that's just a kind of a snapshot, but we do put a lot of data into thinking about where our projects go. So if this one goes away, if you can kind of keep toggling back, because it'll take me a second to talk on this one. So our idea and. You know what? I haven't had this on the whole time. That's a way to instill trust. Does this work on screen? It does not work on the screen. So just to kind of point you, I'm not going to go through all of the projects that we have vetted with the steering committee. We have about nineteen, I think maybe twenty, one, two, three, four, steering committee. But the idea of what we're proposing is here where we are in town, town hall, town park, is to create kind of a hub and spoke system. That would carry you from town park to the future van or farm road. Out to the school, connections to the Acusa Greenway that's coming. And then up toward Eagles and possibly Sierra Nevada. We have some more conversation to have around there. So it doesn't really look like a hub and spoke, but if you think of town hall as an anchor point, like if this is your jumping out point for adventure in Mills River. Then you can get to all of these other places that were, are within your community. And when you start looking at future van farm road park, you have all of those, you know, the breweries, that's where your farmer's market is. So the people can get through town. To these key destinations without having to get on one of your major roadways. And that's how our idea is shaping. And those green lines that you see farther out are probably projects that we will talk about as being. Ideally, they would be bike lanes, but that's going to require a. An investment on N C D O T's part in partnership with N C D O T. So what, when we get to final recommendations, what you'll probably see is a recommendation, a long-term recommendation for getting bike lanes on some of those more popular roads where you see bicyclists thriving. Those folks who go out every weekend and ride or who are riding the roads. There's, we've heard a lot about how it's not a safe place for them to be. Ideally, it would be widened, but the interim steps probably going to be, let's get some signage out there, or there's some small spot improvements that could be made, maybe a blind curve or do some smaller things. So if you combine those bike lanes with kind of that hub and spoke freeway trail. Sidewalk kind of network and you do, then people could at any place where they, your key destinations in town now, they could be on a network that felt pretty good and pretty safe to get to all of those other points. We particularly think that it's important and we got commitment from the steering committee on that, that we do connect to the Acusa Trail. And there, the one thing that there's still some discussion on is that lower end of the Mills River Valley Trail. I know you all have some discussion in town. About whether that should be on or not. For now, we found there ultimately, when this comes back before you for a final vote, that'll be, there'll be some more, there'll be more steps. For discussion before we get there, but ultimately, it'll be the town's decision whether that particular line remains on or not. And so I, I covered this a little bit, but those projects are divided into community connectors, which are little short segments, bike lanes and shoulders. Or in green areas in this area, wide connections. And we're going to keep with those themes since you have so many projects. But that's how we'll talk to the community about them. And then just in terms of next steps, I mentioned our community engagement window is just getting ready to kick off. We'll have two meetings on February ninth. Both of those will be virtual. We will, throughout the whole month of February, we will keep that survey open. We will have information on the website that, again, we, it's a, it's a fairly simple website that we created specifically for this project. We will have information on the website that, again, we, it's a, it's a fairly simple website that we've created specifically for this project. And we will refine the projects during the winter, come back for another public meeting in May twenty twenty, and I'll probably back, be back in front of you in the summer for final adoption of that plan. And this slide here gives you the, the project website and, um, my contact information if you want to talk more. Um, I can talk a lot about this stuff. And, um, I'm here to answer any questions, or I can let you guys just get on your merry-go-round.
Do you have any questions?
Thank you, one, let me say one more thing that didn't hit as hard as it probably should. Um, one of the important things about doing this, particularly in Mills River, is, um, most of your roads are DOT roads. Uh, and as those roads get improved, if you don't have a line on the map saying we would like to see this facility, when DOT comes in, they're not going to provide free charge as policy is now, they're not going to provide, um, that either sidewalk or bicycle connection or, or greenway or multi-use path for you. If you have that line on the map, um, and they do come through and do an improvement project, then I mean, that's what's your experience here, you know, up here on this road. If you can have a cost share with it, and that's the big difference. So when you do, when we do come back in front of you, these projects are expensive. Um, when we come back in front of you in the future, and you start tallying how much all of those projects are, it might sticker shot. But remember, that's, the, the onus is not all on Town Council to do that. A large, large part of that is kind of doing partnerships and funding, particularly with DOT, this puts you in the path to be able to do that.
Is there any more questions?
I'm good, thank you. Thanks, Christie.
Thank you. Moving on to staff updates.
I have no report.
Don't admit it.
No, big time.
Oh, I hate to break the streak. Just a couple of real quick things. First of all, I wanted to thank, um, Councilmember, uh, Goo and Cantrell. Last couple of days, they've been sending in, uh, training course, University School of Government and Municipal Essentials of the Government. It's been a great course, although it does take up a good portion of the day, so thank you both for doing that. Uh, and secondly, um, the, uh, Dr. Laura Leatherwood, ever at Blue Ridge Community College, has recognized that as the Community College President of the Year. Um, so I just think that's worth noting, a valuable member of our community, does a great job over there. And, um, that's it. All right. Thank you.
Council on this. If you want to. Entertain, you know, of us filling out the parks, I mean. It's more of a, last time.
Yeah.
My question to one heard, to the first name.
I'm sorry, can you repeat?
Hold on. Hold on. I need a second. Same second. All in favor? Go ahead, ahead.
Clarification, is that to complete the existing term good through June thirty, or are you creating a new term?
We are, I guess, filling that position that was reassigned, wasn't it?
Right, so this would be good through June thirty. I'm just going to put it as part of your.
Uh, I'd like to say that, uh, I was on a Zoom meeting with, uh, MTO today. Uh, some people like to know that, uh, they did pass, or we did pass, the interchange off of twenty-six that would be feeding out to the Pratt, uh, Whitney plant from twenty-six popping back out in Bent Creek, it's a new bridge. Uh, there was a bunch of questions asked, it's all come apart, come, come on us so fast and, uh, that nobody could believe it was going to get pushed through like it did. But, uh, they come in at right at thirty million dollars. Uh, a lot of the questions was, is you know, it's, right now, it's not taking any monies out of District thirteen or fourteen at this time, it's all coming from other monies that the state's provided. So they're thinking they're going to be like two point five million short, uh, but they'll make it up somewhere. Uh, biggest question was, is if it's, if we come in like all these other projects, real bad short, or are they going to have to rob from some of the other projects in the making? It appears that they would have to at this point unless something else changed. That's all I. I will say that I did ask, uh, because I was asked to ask in this meeting, if there was any way that they could ever turn that into a private road like they had possibly done in a different state. The, there's so much money from North Carolina going into this project in Pratt. Whitney is not necessarily putting anything into it at this point, that there would be no way they can do that. And there's several other parcels in there that they think's going to be developed as a reason the state's not on board to get there. And that's all I. Anybody else? Nope. All right. Yeah, we got to go into this closed session. Uh, you want to talk about something else?
I was going to say, before you go into the closed session, we're waiting on your attorney. You've moved a little faster than I anticipated. She's hoping to be here in the next ten minutes, so just don't make that motion, you can either take a recess.
Yeah.
Chat, whatever you need to do.
We'll wait them upstairs for her.
Please. Really know if we can. I mean. Uh, I don't foresee there's nothing we can. They have been pretty legally given to talk about, really.
So a couple of years ago, when, when Regent Meadows resigned from the board, we worked with council to develop a process to basically, in essence, advertise a position in the public and, and have people submit applications, a regular board and volunteer application like they would for any other board. And then we as staff, um, collected those and scheduled those folks to come to a meeting. And they came and were interviewed, and I believe the appointment was made on the second time that they were there, if I remember correctly. Uh, I can't remember. But it was about six weeks.
So does, does staff make the appointment?
No, no.
Council and council.
Council makes the appointment.
It's just a different format for bringing in the application.
And, and actually, the application was developed when Mr. Glenn resigned. It's the same application, it just, we advertise it, give a few weeks for people to bring, to give their names, and we do invite them to a meeting. Um, so, um, but you know, the process belongs to the board if you have another process.
Thank you, let's the application window open for like thirty-eight. I don't remember that.
Is that right? That's right.
But that would be fair.
So. And hearing all this, do we want to move forward at this point?
Do we have to accept it? Can we not hop in?
What has been done? It was already noted to be accepted.
Yeah, yeah.
That was the advice of the town's attorney when, when Mr. Meadows resigned back in two thousand twenty, was to officially accept it.
Yeah, that's where, uh, I wasn't here when Reggie went out, so I didn't know the format. Um, uh, yeah, we've done accepted this, this resignation. At this point, the only thing I can see him doing is to get back in, he'd have to run. It, it would be, I would say, legal for him to run again at the next, that large order for a district.
That's right.
He, he could even come back with an application.
Well, that's true. That is true. Yeah, that's true. I think that's kind of. Uh, so saying that, that we want to move forward as a council and go ahead and, uh, get staff working on advertising for the vacancy. Or do you, uh, do we have to advertise? I don't.
No, no.
Maybe we don't, but I'm just talking about in general, we'll have to get it out there somehow.
I think it was put on the website last time, wasn't it?
That's right. So, so here, here's a suggestion, um, if, if you'd like, don't take any action this evening, you've already accepted resignation. We can go back and, and look at the process from two thousand twenty. I'll write you a memo basically explaining how that went, and then we can come back here in a special meeting, we'll wait till February tenth and make a decision as to which way you want to go. There, there is no defined process for this, uh, there's nothing in the state statute that says when someone resigns, you have to do X, Y, and Z. Uh, this is entirely your, your decision and your process.
I'll agree with that. So we'll do it till the next meeting and both the memo, or make a decision or not at that point. Anybody in the poll, do we get up this tall? Well, we got them in.
Actually, just one of the things we normally do when a council member goes up, is we will get a plaque and invite him to come back for it.
Absolutely.
If he's willing.
Absolutely.
And then you can formally present and thank.
Yeah, absolutely. I see a car from up the driveway, so. You need to take a bathroom break while we go to bed. We'll, we'll take a recess for probably five or ten minutes, so we'll be back.